And we can start.
Welcome to the four o'clock study session of Palm Springs Planning Commission. Today, we're going to be discussing cannabis uses and imposing requirements for carbon-free indoor renewable energy, including solar. At this point, we will have, can we roll call of the commission and then we will go to public comment?
Yes, Commissioner Ilan.
I am here.
Commissioner Urban.
I'm here.
Commissioner Hertzmann.
Present.
Commissioner Murty.
Here.
Commissioner Song.
Present.
Vice Chair Roberts.
Present.
And Chair Wermuth.
Present.
All members are present.
The next item on our agenda is public comment. Members of the public are allowed to speak. David, do we have members of the public who've asked to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two people who have called us to speak and there may be others on the line. So for the people who have called in, we have our first speaker is Gary LaSalle. And then followed by that, we'll have Jenny Foote, who is a call-in speaker. So I'll have to call Jenny as soon as Mr. LaSalle is about done with his comments.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
We have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Good seeing everybody again. Um, I wanted to talk to you guys about this, this green energy and potential mandate for companies of our set like ourselves to utilize it on our facilities. And as I mentioned at other staff meetings and in front of council, you know, solar, the idea of solar, I think every cultivator in the Coachella Valley would love to put it on their facility. But you come to a point where so much space is required in order to justify the expense of putting solar in, it just doesn't equate. Now, since our last meeting, I've done some due diligence and I basically confirmed what my initial thoughts were, which was a facility of our size that's going in is roughly less than, a little less than 10 acres. We would need an additional 10 acres in order to provide adequate amount of energy to offset, not even full amount of energy. To put solar in, as I've mentioned before, in an area that would be feasible at the cost of roughly $5 million to offset nearly 1% of our overall energy bill, again, it doesn't make sense. I wish I would have known this at the last meeting, but doing the due diligence and talking with a few staff members, I did more research into the DCE program. And it was, it's, to our knowledge, it's mandated that any new facility is automatically enrolled in this new program. And this program is our understanding that we purchased the power from DCE and it is 100% alternative power that they're feeding to our facility. Therefore, our facility will be purchasing power that is based on 100% green energy, which I think is an amazing alternative to something that we would only be able to offset 1% of our utility bill, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And I could pretty much, I'm not speaking for everybody up there, but if somebody was to come to you with a $5 million investment and offered you a 1% return, I think everybody would kind of take a step back and say, I'm not sure if that's a wise investment or not. Now, we're all for green energy. We've changed our lighting to LED. Our new facilities are, is going to be as energy efficient as they possibly can be. But other than that, just sticking solar up there, to stick solar up there and have it not really do what I think you guys really want it to do, which is to offset a majority of our power, it's just not feasible. That's all I have to say.
I'd like to speak.
You're out of order at this point. The next speaker, I believe, is Jenny Foote, and then we'll put you next on the list.
Thank you.
If you would raise your hand for David on the system, let him know that you want to speak.
Not sure how I do that, but I'll.
We know that you wish to speak, Fred.
Whenever, whenever convenient.
Okay, Madam Chair, our next speaker is Jenny Foote. Ms. Foote, you are live with the planning commission and you may provide your comments. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. I'm speaking on agenda item number one. As you probably know, I'm one of the originators of the establishment of the cultivation sale and use of cannabis in Palm Springs. And as you also know, and some of you have participated in the many public hearings that were held before any ordinances were written. So I'm now asking that you continue agenda item number one for many reasons, but I'll lay out some that I really feel are important. First of all, I don't understand how an ordinance can be written without involving any of the stakeholders to ascertain what's possible, what's achievable, and how it will affect their businesses. I can think of no other business that we have in the city that we would impose such restrictions on and not get their input first. Secondly, I also believe that with the nature of the cannabis business, that the ordinance as written, it's not possible to achieve. And thirdly, there are, we have approved projects in the cannabis overlay zone, which were created to encourage and diversify Palm Springs economy and easing restrictions so that businesses, cannabis businesses would locate in that zone rather than in the neighborhood. And there are several approved projects in the overlay zone that have already planned and budgeted their projects. And this ordinance would have major impact on their budgets and on their development schedule. And all of this was done without any input as to how it would affect those businesses. So in essence, we're changing the rules in the middle of the game without knowing what is possible, especially after approving a project, it's not business friendly, nor is it how we should treat established businesses in our community. Additionally, I know you all, and I am myself, committed to any plan that reduces our carbon footprint, but I don't think as this is written, it's possible, so it's not going to be workable. So I'm asking that you not go with this to the planning commission for a formal vote until there has been public input from the community and from the stakeholders that are involved. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, I think the next request to speak was for Noble, followed by Steve Majaki. Sorry, I missed my pronunciation.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. The report, the assumption according to the slideshow is that industrial and commercial is 14% of our electrical load in Palm Springs. Cannabis, to be generous, is 10% of that, and it's probably 2% of it. So you are basically dealing here with 1.46% of the electrical load in the city. And you have singled out one industry for special scrutiny. The reason this is important is because there is a recital in the ordinance that says that cannabis is a substantial contributor to greenhouse gas. It is, at this point, less than 1.4% of the industrial and commercial performance. So you really have a, you're trying to deal with a problem that doesn't really exist in any significant way. People have made plans, they've designed their projects, they're state-of-the-art, and now this comes along and even to grant that it has a laudable goal. It is internally inconsistent and self-destructive. For example, proposed paragraph 8.30 decimal 040A says, where can they go for renewable power? Purchase it from carbon-free renewable energy resources, onsite generation. It doesn't mention desert community energy. And obviously, they should be able to do what Amazon does and Tesla does and Patagonia does, which is buy renewable REX. They pay for someone else to put in renewables somewhere else in the state. I mean, that's obvious, simple solution. You know, I've been in the renewable business 40 years and I would love to have a monopoly where you had to buy power from me to run the greenhouse, but it's just, that's not right. They should be able to buy REX, it's just common sense. But the real problem with this ordinance is.
Can you explain the word REX?
Yeah, renewable energy credit, there's a marketplace for it. If I build a wind farm, I will contract with Edison or somebody to buy the power and I'll contract with someone else to buy the renewable credit. In other words, instead of a cannabis grower putting solar on his roof, I build solar somewhere else and he gets the credit for that development. The state has a credit valuation system. The theory is, not everybody can put solar on their roof, witness the last speaker, but everybody can go to this marketplace and buy renewable credits generated by somebody who built it somewhere else. I mean, it's a simple, clever system.
Mr. Noble, we're past three minutes.
Yeah, I know, but this is really critical here. This is really a water regulation ordinance in shapes clothing. And right now, the regional water quality control board is doing rules and regulations. The state has ordinances in the process governing renewable use of, for cannabis. There's all kinds of state activity going on. And what you're doing here is trying to duplicate what the state is already doing. And with respect to the Sustainability Commission, the state's got a much better arms around what the issues really are. So until you've had time to hear from the people that live with this, you should continue it and you should certainly not send it to the planning commission and get it approved, then have a, you know, all this spied out with the city council. Much of this is good, but it has, it has hand grenades in it that are going to blow up in everybody's face. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Rajadik.
Can everybody hear me okay? All right. So I'm specifically, so I represent a cultivation project, Reefer Madness, at 4645P on Ramon Road. Also, I represent Julie Camby's project, Evolved Engineering, at 1241 South Gene Autry. So both our projects include cultivation and each of our projects take up, they're tiny, they're less than 1,250 square feet. They're not yet in operation, but we have approved CUPs. They're tiny projects. So in the proposal that's being discussed today, specifically on page six, part C, we would like it to explain that approved CUPs follow the same date of applicability, the same date of applicability schedule as cannabis cultivation sites that are in operation. Currently, it says that the new requirements are applicable to all above types receiving their permits for adult-use cannabis cultivation pursuant to section 5.55.096 on or after the effective date of this chapter. I think this description is a little confusing and it doesn't address those like us that are not yet in operation but have already obtained most of our approvals, like CUP. What we don't want to happen, we don't want to get in a position where we've submitted building plans that propose everything the way it is now and then find out that we need to add solar later and then have to resubmit or adjust our plans. So yeah, my request is just that we look at that section specifically. And so currently, I think it defines what's going to happen with operators that are currently operating, and then it defines what's going to happen with new applicants. But what it's not defining is those in between, which are the applicants that have most of the necessary approvals but are not yet operational. And we hope that that won't slow us down further. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, if there's anyone else who wishes to speak at this time, please unmute your microphone and identify yourself. It doesn't appear we have any additional speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. The public hearing is closed. I just wanted to make a comment before we start the study session. This is a study session. And it's in response to questions that were raised with some of the recent projects that have come through, but I do not believe it is the intention, and the director can chime in on this to see if I'm saying it correctly, but I don't believe it is our intention to make decisions today about referring this onto council. We wanted to explore what the issues are and the possibilities. Am I correct in that, Flynn?
Yes, you are. This is a study session, so no action can be taken on this item. In addition, one of the things I need to point out is that if this were to move forward, it would be an amendment to the municipal code. The planning commission does not have any jurisdiction over amendments to municipal code, and so consequently, the planning commission would not take formal action on this item. So your role is limited. Again, you are here to hear information, but you would not have a formal role in the process. One of the things I also want to add is if this were to go forward, let's say that it may be adopted in some format, it may be applicable to you then as you approve future projects in terms of understanding what the requirements would be relative to energy needs. But again, your role is secondary, and so you would not have a formal vote on this as a zone text amendment.
Thank you. That being said, we have a presentation from.
Can I ask you a question about what was just said?
Yes.
So my understanding is the reason we could not impose a solar requirement on a project, the last cannabis project, we saw the large one north of the freeway, was because there was no official policy by council. And so is, would a policy statement by council fall under sort of the same rules as a municipal code amendment? And if, if, if it does have that same effect, would we then be able to, would planning commission then be able to impose that requirement on future applications?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I believe I can speak to that. Yeah, I had outlined in a prior hearing that the city council would have to make policy before imposing conditions similar to this on a project. The council would not necessarily have to do it by an ordinance, it could be by a resolution, some other council adopted citywide policy. However, the approach here, and I think it is the right approach in this case, is a municipal code amendment, so it would be an official formal policy of the city in the code.
Just as, in addition to that, I believe we're doing this, this study session, because the city council asked us to do this. Am I correct, Flynn?
Yes, that is correct. The city council did request for the planning commission to review the matter, even though it really has been the Sustainability Commission who has taken the lead on doing the research for this. I believe that the reason that the city council wanted the planning commission to have this presentation was relative to the item that was brought forward to the city council, Mr. LaSalle's item, in terms of understanding what the possibilities were relative to energy. So that's the basis for this.
Both policies and state of the industry, if I'm correct. Commissioner Roberts, and then I would like to get into our presentations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for a little bit more clarification, does the city council have any intention of taking this up anytime soon?
I'm not aware of any specific timeframe. So no, I couldn't tell you that there's an immediate request that this come forward. As you've heard in the public comment today, there's been a request for stakeholder input, which I think is more than valid request, and additional research and study will need to be done. So no, I don't believe that there's any timeframe that city council has given to have any recommendations on this.
Okay, so it would seem to me that we really should be talking about this when the city council is ready to deal with it. Furthermore, I have a question. If, with respect to something you just said, Director, when this went through sustainability, because that's where this draft ordinance was developed, if I heard correctly, was there not public comment at that time, or more importantly, stakeholder comment at that time?
As I wasn't present when it was discussed in sustainability, I might ask Mr. Friedman if he could respond to that question.
Yeah, with all, just to, I'll address, I would like to make, once we have our friends from, from the Energy Commission, because they've been waiting, that I will be able to address all of these issues in my presentation. I, and in particular, the need for stakeholder input, which is fully there. I was requested to do this, and so it is what I've been able to accomplish, to create a framework for your meeting between essentially five weeks ago and now. This needs to go through further research and then sustainability, if planning is not further involved, then that's noted. But I am the first one to tell you that this was prepared essentially at the request of council and your commission. And we, sustainability has been on break just as anybody else. So you're the first to see this. The study session was scheduled for today. This is what I was able to accomplish in the five weeks that I had roughly since your last meeting, when that, when today's meeting was scheduled.
So David, I'm very much looking forward to your presentation, and I know that you're a real expert in this area. I do want to say to my colleagues, I almost feel that we're getting this prematurely. Although we may not have any real input other than in an advisory capacity to council, I think we should be seeing it once it's, well, for lack of a better term, it's a little more cooked. And that cooking should include direct stakeholder comments on the latest and greatest version of whatever David and sustainability are working on. So my question, Madam Chair, is are we doing even this study session prematurely?
We had looked at that, we had, and we had also asked Sustainability to do this with us. So when this question was raised to us, we decided not to abandon this, but to use it as a learning session in terms of what, what the state is doing currently, what the city has been looking at doing through sustainability, and what is possible. There, there are things that are coming out in this that are very valuable, like looking at renewable, renewable energy credits, as well as looking at people buying clean energy through the DCE program. But I think it would be good just to allow the presentation to happen. And then if we, if the city council wants just to be involved when it's a bit more cooked, I don't think, I was surprised to see an ordinance today as opposed to a presentation. I, I think the presentation is very valuable, the ordinance might be a little premature for us to work with.
Thank you for the clarification.
If we, we have a presentation, I would like to start it now.
Yes, Madam Chair. As, as we discussed, this is an item that was requested by the planning commission and council. So Commissioner or Vice Chair Sustainability Commissioner Friedman has been working a great deal in following the state requirements and what cities can do, and has worked with the city attorney's office to draft an ordinance, and it's really just for talking purposes. This is not an ordinance that we suggest is final and ready to go for the council to adopt. Additional stakeholder outreach will be conducted prior to anything going before the council. So it is, again, for discussion purposes. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Friedman. So let me pull up his presentation.
Thank you. We do have our friends from the Energy Commission, and their presentation goes before mine because it's very important for the planning commissioners to understand that this is really a two-part process. First, the Energy Commission has just adopted, two weeks ago, on August 11th, the 2022 Energy Code, which will go into effect statewide on January 1, 2023. And there are various provisions, both for cannabis cultivation and more generally for commercial buildings, and I believe that had been raised also in your request. So our friends from the Energy Commission have kindly agreed to provide us information about the requirements. These will be mandatory requirements in effect as of January 1, 2023. And city council, as it does every three years, several weeks before then, roughly late November of 2022, will pass an ordinance that adopts in the municipal code, chapter 8.04, all of the Building Standard Commission requirements, triennial code requirements, which include the energy code. So this will be codified in the municipal code upon its effect. And this, of course, we have the current code, 2019 code, which is already in effect, but these are new provisions for the 2022 code in effect in January 1, 23. So with that, we have Taow Chow and Danny Tam of the Energy Commission with their presentation of first the, what we call the Controlled Environmental Horticulture, which is cannabis, indoor and greenhouse cannabis cultivation requirements. And then Mr. Tam will speak about the solar plus battery requirement that will be applicable for commercial buildings also in 2023.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. My name is Taow Chow, and I am an electric engineer with the Building Standards Office in the Efficiency Division at the California Energy Commission. Today, I'm going to present a newly adopted controlled environmental horticulture requirement for the 2022 co-cycle update, which, as David said, will be effective in January 1, 2023. I also want to make a quick note on this, the controlled environmental horticulture requirement will apply to all indoor growths, including other plants, not just cannabis. It could be tomatoes, could be lifeguard greens, any kind of indoor planting. Next, please. So before I go into the details of the requirement, I would like to provide some backgrounds regarding our authority as an agency and its regulatory process. So in 1974, Warren Alpus Act was signed to laws mandating the updates of the building's efficiency standards. So hopefully, every three years, the CAC will make updates to the energy code to reduce wasteful inefficiency, un-economical, and unnecessary energy consumption in newly constructed buildings, additions, and alterations. After the CAC adopts these standards, they are then submitted to the California Building Standards Commission for approval and inclusion into the California Building Standards Code, also known as Title 24. Next, please. When updating this co-cycle, we consider the following goals. We want to increase building energy efficiency costs effectively while considering the state G H E reduction score. We want to enable all electric building compliance pathway as a way to reduce building impacts on the electricity grid. We want to promote the mere flexibility and so utilization of the P V generation. And lastly, we also want to provide tools for local government rich codes, which is why we're here today. There are 16 climate zone in California due to its climate diversity. There are five types coastal, inland. Central Valley, deserts and mountains. The city of Palm Springs form within the desert area and it is designated climate zone 15. The energy standards use weather data to calculate pit loads for each climate zone and set climate zone specific requirements. Next, please. As an agency, we are very proud of our open, transparent, public, engaged process for the code update. To develop the 2022 energy code update, the C E C conducted 18. Conducted an extensive transparent public process between April 19, 2019 and adoption of August 11 of this year. The C E C held and participated in 20 stakeholder meetings and public workshops with support from the statewide code and standard program. How three lead commissioner hearings and consider over 300 formal public comments. And committed countless hour of collaboration with many different public stakeholders. As part of the work Alpus Act, the standards must be cost effective. And we use life cycle costing methodology and time independent value to analyze cost effectiveness. Next, please. So now I will go into the actual requirements. Applicable to control environment, horticulture spaces, like I mentioned before, those spaces. Include other plants other than just cannabis, but I understand the framework for today. We are mainly concerned about cannabis cultivation. So section 120.6 H1 regarding dehumification requirements. Standalone dehumifiers will be required to meet minimum federal efficiency standard. X F system design for dehumification will need either. Heat recovery capability or will need to utilize solid desiccant or liquid desiccant dehumification systems. Next, please. Section 120.6 H2 is the indoor horticultural lighting. The photosynthetic photon efficacy, which is known as P P E, is the chosen metric for lighting efficacy for this co-cycle update. Lighting fixtures will need to meet efficacy standards based on the industry standard measure of micro more per joule. The threshold is 1.9 micro more per joule for indoor facilities with more than 40 K W connected load. Depending on whether the fixtures are integrated or have removable lamps. And of course, the time switch and multi-level controls in section 110. Point 9 B1, 130.1 B, 130.4 A4 still apply in those spaces. They will not be exact. Next slide, please. One of the. One of the requirement and. Feedback that we receive from public when we decided to update. The code to include the control environmental horticulture spaces is the request to update the greenhouse envelope. So in section Newton, the new section 120.6 X4. We update. So that greenhouse now will have clear simplified language for. Skylight and window requirements that can be met using building standard materials and construction method that commonly develop. They've deployed in the market, which typically have two placings or more. This clarifies and improve the existing energy code would treat the greenhouses to same as requirements at warehouses. Next slide, please. So section 120.6 H6 applies to greenhouse horticultural lighting. So the greenhouse horticultural lightings will have very similar to indoor grown lighting requirements. The only difference is the lower threshold 1.7 micro more per joule instead of the 1.9 micro more per joule for indoor facilities. The reason for this difference is mainly. To account for the natural lighting nature of greenhouses and therefore the lighting needs for plant are less intensive and therefore less of the lighting load. Next slide, please. Session 141.1 C1 is the additions and alteration requirement for control environmental horticulture spaces. For addition and alterations on the new applicable C H requirements will need to meet starting in January 1, 2023. Space conditioning system and dehumification for indoor girls will have to reference section 120.6 H1 and 2. Newly conditioned greenhouses will reference section 120.6 H5 and 6 for envelope requirements. For major lighting renovation projects that either increase lighting waters or adding alternating. At least 10% of the existing lighting system. And the auto lighting then will need a midsection 120.6 X3 for indoor grow. Or 120.6 H7 for greenhouses. And I want to emphasize that the only auto lighting system. Need to meet the new requirement, not the entire existing lighting system. So if you update 10% of your lighting. Say you have. You're currently using metal highlight and what you want to update 10% of the existing lighting system, then you will need to update a new 10%. Up to the new requirement, which is the P P E of 1.9 micro module, you do not need to rip out all of your. For existing lighting and update all of them up to the new standard, only the altar components need to be. Needing the new requirement. And that will include conclude my presentation and the rest of my presentation will be about. P V and battery storage, and you will hear from my colleague Danny Tam.
Hi, I'm Danny Tam, C C staff mechanical engineer. I'll be presenting a high level overview of the changes in P V and battery storage requirements for multifamily and non-res buildings. Next slide. As you may know, we adopted P V requirements for newly constructed single family buildings in 2019. For the 2022 code cycle, we're extending the P V requirement to. Non-res buildings, it'll be it'll be applicable to high-rise residential buildings and selected rent non-residential building. Types such as office, retail and warehouses and etc. I should note that C H is not part of this list. Next slide. The P V requirement is sized based on limiting the alley export. To 20% without battery and 10% with battery. This requirement should allow the building to self utilize more than 90% of the P V generation instead of exporting electricity to the grid. We found that this is cost effective, even under a future NAM3 scenario where. Their alley P V export will most likely have a lower compensation rate. Next slide. What we found is that the two technology, P V and battery storage really have great synergy together and. Together, they help maximize the benefit to the building owner and minimize the building impact to the grid. Obviously, it helps lower the electricity bill for the building owner and avoid demand charges. But additionally, also make the building more resilient with the battery. More resilient to P S P S events. And from the grid's perspective. P V bear P V paired with battery helps to smooth out the duck curve where there's, you know, too much solar resources in the middle of the day. And then followed by evening ramp. Next slide. We also added a number of exceptions because each non-res and multifamily building is unique and. This requirement might not always be feasible or cost effective. For instance, a 20-story building. Will most likely not have the roof space available for P V. Or the required P V size is too small, that is not cost effective, cost effective. So as you can see on this list here, for example, if the P V size is less than 4 kilowatt is not required or. Area with high snow load. Also note that no battery storage for warehouses, office and climate zone 1, which wouldn't apply to you guys, you guys in climate zone 15. Next slide. Yeah, that's all I have is just a very, very high level overview of the P V and source requirement. Please contact us if you have any additional questions.
Thank you.
I'll be able to relate in my presentation what our friends from the Energy Commission just said for our proposal. So. Thank you, Talan and Danny for for joining us. Of course, you're welcome to stay home depending on your time commitment for this afternoon. All right. Thank you, planning commissioners. I I've prepared a presentation in the interest of of time. I'll I'll try to focus my presentation in particular to respond. To the public comments. Those comments actually were anticipated in a large number of the bullet points that are already in the presentation. But I'll highlight some of those, some of those aspects. Next slide. So just sort of the framework that 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 the city is working in, particularly Sustainability Commission Sustainability Office. You may recall the city council approved in June 2016. The sustainability plan, we are in the process of updating it, hopefully to go to council sometime next year. But there are a number of goals that council and direction that council has given to us. And and council member corps is very specifically directed the Sustainability Commission not to let the. Plan to sit on paper, but to actually work to to achieve the goals that the plan set out. So. You can see the goals, but there are a number that are quite relevant to to the proposal. In particular, reduce total energy used by by buildings. Both for new exit buildings and existing buildings, supply 50% of. Energy from renewable sources, encouraging the building retrofitting of 1 million square feet. Of green building and reduce G H emissions to 90, 99 levels by 2020, 80% below 1990 levels for 2050. Those are the goals that are set out in the sustainability plan, but on a parallel basis. Subsequent to the adoption of the sustainability plan in 2016, the state has set a number of other goals quite aggressive. That we're also working at. The ones that are most relevant for this proposal are under S B 32 and A B 3232. The Energy Commission is working very hard on those, and they are to reduce G H emissions 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. So the state has given us a very aggressive timeframe that we're working on. Next slide, please. So in conjunction with the general plan update that you all have been doing on a parallel track, the city has completed a G H inventory. The good news is that largely as a result of the adoption last year of desert community energy. It's a carbon-free program where the energy is 100% carbon-free from renewable and hydro power sources. The city actually was able to achieve the goal of reducing 2020 emissions below 1990 level. So we've got a great start, but of course, there's a lot more to do. As noted, commercial industrial represents about 14.5% of G H emissions. And the other contributors, large contributors are transportation and residential energy. Now, we are looking. At reducing all of those buckets with a goal of taking where we are now and slashing another 40% in roughly the next nine and a half years. Every single one of the contributors to G H emissions, and we're taking a hard look at what we can do. Next slide, please. So really, the question is trying to get before we even start, you know, looking at what a potential ordinance to do. Is simply to get a baseline assessment of the environmental impact of cannabis facilities. First of all, they are not your typical warehouse or industrial cannabis cultivation is considered much more energy and water intensive. Than a general light industrial use that's assumed in the Cal E mod that you've seen in sequent studies. And this paragraph is this bullet point is just lifted directly from the Kings Garden E I R. So. I'm just sort of reflecting what's there. There have been a lot of recent studies about energy and water use, which are not reflected actually in the Kings Garden E I R, some of the other ones. The source that seems to be the most rep sort of reputable or used by both the cannabis industry and the state. Was prepared by New Frontier Data in 2018. And it's based on what we call energy use intensity, and it's measured per square foot of canopy. Depending on the type of facility and whether they're a greenhouse or fully indoor. And whether they're using either LED lamps or high pressure sodium lamps, you can see sort of the the amount of energy that it's used. But it's it's a fairly large amount of energy that's used for those. So that essentially this, these are the data that the state has relied on. To come up with a proposal that Mr. Tao just just explained to you from the Energy Commission. There is a more recent study, the council member corps cited at the council meeting where with the call up of Kings Garden. And I looked at that, that is from Colorado State University. It just came out earlier this year. And it looks like total life cycle G H emissions per kilogram of dried flour. And unlike the other studies, this is life cycle. So it looks at not only just energy, but water and packaging and transportation. And the study provides sort of a national sort of average. But the study authors created G I S a data set for each county. And so I was able to specifically identify their estimate of. T H emissions for cannabis cultivation Riverside County. So this is a a recent study and it's brought to made local by by the authors of the study. The amount of water is still a bit of a work in progress. The I found the E I R from Santa Cruz County from 2017, which said that. Both indoor and greenhouse was using roughly a tenth of a gallon per square foot of canopy per day. I am in touch with Mission Springs Water District in the Kings Garden E I R. They have a higher standard of 4.55 acre feet per year per site acre size. So. Kings Garden that was roughly at 42 acre feet per year. So we're trying to. Clarify and do a little bit more work on that. That's one of the points that needs additional work with stakeholders. But essentially, the general view from both energy and water is that these facilities use just much more than the average industrial facility. Next slide, please. So with that in mind, as somebody who's done a lot of drafting ordinances, many of which have seen, it's easier for me to create a framework for you to have. And then sort of discuss what that is and then modify based on input from the various commissions, council, and of course, the stakeholders. So what I've done is I've taken an ordinance based on something adopted by the Board of Supervisors. San Francisco in 2019 and is intended to build on and to complement the provisions on cannabis generally. Other horticultural facilities, but in our fake case cannabis and solar and storage for non-residential buildings. So it takes what they will say as of 2023 and then built on that. And the next point is the one that I really, really want to insist on. This is not a requirement for anybody to put solar panels up on their building. This says you need to be using. Carbon-free and renewable energy. How you get that energy is absolutely up to you. What certainly is contemplated both here and it was in the San Francisco ordinance is that you will be purchasing that energy. You will not have to do anything for your building. You will simply go as Mr. Marshall already indicated, and sounds like he's he's kind of already there. This simply says you will be on the desert community energy carbon-free program. Or alternatively, Southern California Edison has very has very. Also green power of programs. We need to. We need to work with them, but those were essentially what's, what's contemplated. I had not thought about Rex, Mr. Noble raises a very interesting idea. There's a lot more administrative requirements burden on the city to sort of value what, what renewable Rex would be, there's a registry. I'd be happy to work with, with staff and the city attorney's office to explore that. And simply to include it definitionally of what counts as carbon free and renewable energy. So the, the, the basic idea is you're buying it from DC or SE, or if we can work it out with, with Rex. You're not putting anything on your building. And in fact, a requirement to put solar on your building, I agree entirely, that is what the state has already done. They have made the determination through the lengthy process that they've just explained to you that they will not require solar on, on cannabis or other core horticultural facilities. So what they've done is they've got a bunch of requirements for other commercial buildings and for cannabis facilities, they have lighting requirements, they have dehumidification requirements. They do not require putting solar on, on your building. And in fact, if the city were to think about that, that is what's called a reach code that was mentioned in the slides. And for the city to impose that requirement, it would have to be in an ordinance. And most importantly, you have to get pre-approval of the Energy Commission and you have to demonstrate cost effectiveness. And given what Mr. Marshall had said, I'm not sure that that determination can be made. And so the alternative to say, you know, what can we do is to simply say, you do not put, do not have to put solar on your building. You simply buy renewable energy from the people who provide it being DCE, SCE or alternatively Rex, if we can figure out, you know, how that can be done. Separately, the Sustainability Commission is looking at other issues on existing buildings. But that's sort of just part of our, you know, whole approach of what we're looking at to reduce GHG emissions and improve energy efficiency in the city. But that would also be for non-residential buildings, but that's, that is not today's purpose. Just let you know that we're working on that. Next slide. So specifically for cannabis, it applies to indoor and mixed light facilities. The renewable energy requirement for existing facilities phased in over three years. And there's a slide that I'll get to on that with the largest facilities based on.
Explain mixed light facilities.
Greenhouse.
Thank you.
That's simply the way the state defines it and that's how our licenses are written because our, the municipal code sort of simply adopts the state definition. So for example, Kings Garden is fully indoor and I believe the Indigo Project that you recently approved is a mixed light project. So they have essentially skylights. So that, those are the two main ones that we're seeing in the, in, in the cannabis zone. New facilities must comply at, at the start of operations. I, I, I understand the, the comment that was raised and, you know, that's something that we can work out with staff. Although once again, this does not require anybody to put solar on your roof. It just says you need to be buying it, you know, is to who you're, who you're getting your power from more and more accurately. What kind of power you're, you're getting from the people who are already giving your power, which is SE or DC. But that's a point that can be worked out with staff. Something that I have added that the state did not do, and that's in a response to comments that the, the, you commissioners have raised is about water use. The state decided not to require, at least for the upcoming code, code cycle, a requirement to recycle the, the water for dehumidification requirements that is identified as best industry practice. That's a discussion with the stakeholders to understand the costs and the vendors who are available to do that. But this would, um, this would go beyond the state requirement. And it would serve to reduce the water use. So that is currently required, but it's one of the many points that need to be discussed with the, with stakeholders being, sorry, currently being required. It's in the draft, it needs to be discussed with stakeholders. And then just as part of the application process administratively, permits have, have to provide substantial evidence of ability to comply with energy and water requirements. And certainly for the energy, this means, you know, show us your bills from SE or DC. Or as a potentially, we could see how we could work out with, with Rex. Where renewable energy certificates, Mr. Noble mentioned. Next slide, please. So this is once again in response to, to, to requests from, from the commission, although you had been focused on cannabis. Um, my understanding is that you did also want to see what can be done generally for other commercial buildings. And so the ordinance, um, not only for the cannabis facilities, but also for different building, non-residential buildings would also require them to be purchasing green energy from, you know, from the whatever supplier that would be. So it does exempt small commercial businesses. Once again, it's phased in over three years based on the S E tariff or monthly energy demand. The San Francisco ordinance was based on building size. The city building division does not have accurate data. So this is based on energy demand by the various buildings with the highest, you know, buildings with the highest energy use first. Once again, new facilities would comply at their certificate occupancy. And if you're already on a long-term energy requirement, and this is called the direct access program, it's closed to new participants, but some of the very large facilities in the city could potentially have energy supply agreements long term that they signed years ago. And this allows them to continue those contracts and any renewals of the contract. So they would not be required to break their contract and they would just continue until those contracts expired. Next slide, please. So here's the, just the phase in schedule. Given the concerns that the planning commission, city council has raised, it would be effective before first for the various indoor, large indoor and greenhouse facilities. And then the phase in would be go over the next couple of years for smaller cannabis facilities as well as for the non-residential buildings. This is obviously aggressive and given stakeholder comment, you know, it could be adjusted. There's no magic to any of these dates is simply now a framework to people to work for. And then parallel, as the Energy Commission has noted, you've got the new requirements for non-residential and high-rise residential buildings. And then the, the cannabis requirements for, for dehumidification for the lighting and that would apply to new as Ms. Chow mentioned, also some additions and alterations. So no magic to any of the proposed, the schedule of any of the city requirements. And obviously this would be a point to be discussed with the stakeholders. Next slide, please. So just some implementation. This is largely taken from, from, from San Francisco. City manager can adopt various implementation rules, including verification. There is possibility for the city manager to suspend or modify the requirements. First of all, if the energy is not available or if the price premium over the base product from either DC or S E exceeds twenty five percent. That also can be adjusted, but that's to give sort of a maximum cap of additional, of additional costs. And then also because the state does regulate some of these things, to the extent that the state may in a future code cycle require these thing, things where the city, you know, has, has proposed something. The state rules would prevail. The energy code is adopted and updated every three years as it just has been. And then the state has a goal of one hundred percent renewable and carbon free power by twenty forty five. But there is a lot of request to advance that to twenty thirty five. And the extent that you're only getting hundred percent green power, no matter what, because the state requires it. Then the ordinance essentially drops away because the state then, then, then requires it for everyone. Next slide, please. So next steps, your input this evening and then direction from the Sustainability Commission. As I mentioned, this is essentially to create a framework for your discussion between your last meeting and this evening. It has not gone through any of the, you know, certainly not gone through any of the, the general process that we would have for sustainability was, that has been on, 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 on break as well. A lot of things need to happen. First of all, there needs to be discussion with both desert community energy and S E on the availability of the carbon free renewable energy and the number and load profile of the covered energy users. We have to make sure that the, that renewable energy is available to meet these additional demands. So that's probably the first thing is to say, what are the renewable car, energy products? And how much are they going to, to cost? And how they would affect in particular the commercial and industrial users based on the demand sort of implementation phase and schedule that I noted. And then once again, this is the point that has not happened, but absolutely, you know, needs to happen is discussion with the, with the stakeholders on these energy and water requirements. The Office of Sustainability and, and, and the Department of Special Program Compliance are already working on the Sustainability Forum for the cannabis cultivation facilities to be held in the early fall. And, and this is where we would want to get a lot more input from those, from those stakeholders. Not happened in the last five weeks, absolutely does need to happen. And the input from, from this evening has also been useful. And then that stakeholder input and, and from your commission sustainability needs to be reflected before this goes back in any form of formal proposal. So this is a framework for, you know, your discussion and input. It gives you an idea of what the state is, will be doing as of twenty twenty three and what the city can potentially do to complement what the state is doing, which is to say there will not be solar and cannot be solar for, for cannabis facilities. There will be for other commercial facilities as well as battery storage, depending on the size of those facilities. What the city can do to reduce the carbon footprint of the cannabis industry is simply to say, you buy it. You don't have to build it, you simply buy it. So that concludes in what I would call a New York minute, but I know time is, is moving on. So I made the, the presentation quickly and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Why don't I open this up to questions right now? From the commission. Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you, David. Thank you for the presentation. Thank all of you. It, it helps to understand a pretty complicated concept. I have to admit it's, um, there's a lot to consider on this and it's quite a bit over my head. But David, specifically when this went before sustainability, was there stakeholder input at that time?
This is not going through, this essentially is you asked for a study session, I produced a framework for the study session. It's last five weeks, not that the processes to sustainability has not happened. This is simply a framework that I was able to provide for you in the five weeks between your last meeting and this evening.
I got it. This is just your presentation. Excellent. Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Once again, stakeholder input needs to happen, has not happened. And that's one of the reasons why we're working on the forum that I mentioned. Yeah.
Commissioner Song.
Thank you for that presentation. Lots of information. So I want to clarify and then I want to ask a couple of questions. For, for the California Energy Code, when it comes to the new code update in twenty twenty two, they, they are targeting on projects that are sizes as take forty KW. And you know, those are numbers that are in, in the energy code. But in reality, in order to actually have a picture or a scale of that, it would be that equates to a thirty thousand square foot or a thirty thousand square foot growing cannabis facility. It would, it will give us a scale because at the end of the day, if this requirement is for projects that are much larger than sizes that are possible in Palm Springs, then it's not really relatable to what we're trying to consider to achieve. And the same applies for the proposed ordinance of projects that are demanding a greater size than five hundred kilowatts. It's the same thing if, if these projects are greater than a hundred thousand square foot. Then again, the scale is not really relatable to the projects that are coming into Palm Springs. So the, the question is, I'm trying to simplify what is something that is really complicated. But is there a way to look at, okay, a fifty kilowatt sized project is relevant to if it has this much growing facility, this much manufacturer facility and so on and so on. So the scale could be more relatable to what we are seeing as projects that are coming in. The, the, the second concern I have is that if, if for some reason we are able to evaluate that in order to re, to reach the goal of twenty fifty, that we do want to go through the process of having an ordinance in which it has to be approved through the California Energy Code and go through all those steps, which is really challenging of imposing requirements for renewable for smaller projects. The, the issue comes down to who's going to prepare that, who's going to do the energy studies? I, I don't know which entity would be able to author that. And then the consultants that will be hired to, you know, to put that report together. And third and lastly, I think where this is going is now let's just put it on to the applicant to come up with a proposal of how the energy is going to be supplied via a hundred percent third party or, or onsite renewable. If we're putting it onto the applicant to come, what was the process? Does that ordinance also have to be approved through the California Energy Code Commission?
Okay, I'll be able to answer each of these questions. Forgive me if I missed one. On the first question on lighting and, and I deferred to Ms. Goodheart. But my understanding that for an applicant for their, um, in their application, the California Department of Fish, I guess it's Fish and Agriculture. They are required to indicate the size of their lighting in addition to, addition to the size of the canopy. And so that I think is an easily sort of determinable number. I can work with Ms. Goodheart to try to come up with a sort of a, a chart that says how many kilowatts, what is the size of the canopy? So I have not done that, but that information should be determinable based on an applicant's, an applicant's sort of load, you know, load profile and the amount of, of lighting that they will have. Dehumidification will be also applicable for some of the smaller facilities. So that one does not have quite a large threshold. For the other points, um, this is simply, please buy renewable energy. And because it is an energy source requirement, but not an energy efficiency requirement, it does not and cannot and will not mandate the requirement to put solar on your roof. It does not have to go through the Energy Commission prior approval. This was done intentionally to not trigger that requirement, which is why I sort of said, no, we are not requiring solar on your roof. If we were to require solar on your roof, we'd have to justify, get the consultant to create a cost effect of this study. There are substantial cost effect in the studies that the state has produced already to get to the energy code because that's a requirement on the Warren Alquist Act. They have not done this and theoretically it could be done, but I, I, we should not. I, I'm not at all recommending that we go there. Once again, buy it. Don't build it, you know, buy it. We're not saying build it. We're just simply saying we would like to use a hundred percent renewable energy. The city is, you know, launched DCE, decided that everybody at least is automatically enrolled in that one hundred percent carbon free product. You can opt out, but you can work enough down that exists for every single energy user in the city.
Right. But to clarify again, these are for entities where their demand is higher than five hundred kilowatt per month. Right, but to clarify again, these are for entities where their demand is higher than five hundred kilowatt per month.
Uh, that's only the phase in schedule, uh that's the that's the separate, that's for uh for the um commercial, uh the non cannabis. That's the uh, if you look at that, um that starts actually at only at twenty kilowatts. Actually, it's only small businesses. This needs to be further researched with S E and D C E. Um, it applies to everybody, but kind of the, you know, the store on Palm Canyon. Um, but for a larger facility, um, this would be applicable. It would just be phased in several years later. So, yeah.
Are there other questions? I have one, which is, is there energy available? Uh, both for you, you and Mr. Noble.
Uh, uh, my view, once again, this is discussion with S E and D C E. Um, and uh, Mr. Dream from D uh from D C is on on the line. Uh, but D C has contracted and will continue to be contracting to purchase renewable energy for the simple reason is we've got the hundred percent carbon free requirement that the city has uh established. And the state, as I noted, is increasing the renewable requirement. So uh the energy should be available, but once again, that is a discussion, as I put in my bullet point, to be had with uh Edison and with D C to confirm um that anybody who would be subject to this requirement can simply go on to one of the programs and buy it.
So that's not something we know at this time.
Well, I mean, I know it from as to the extent that I can um and and Mr. Dream can speak for for D C E, but um they are, they are absolutely contracting for renewable energy. Uh, roughly eighty percent or so of the city of Palm Springs is already on renewable energy. And Mr. Train, I know, is having discussions with Mr. Marshall for his specific pro- project. Um, I I would refer to Mr. Dream, if you want to sort of let him speak on that.
Yes, please.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Yes, um, D C E does have the power right now to uh accept new facilities. Um, we do like to know beforehand any new facilities that are coming online so that we can adjust our load forecast that we're required to report to the C P U C every year, um just to make sure that we do have enough power procured to cover all of those new facilities. So, and we have a very good uh very strong um power procurement team that um adjusts as necessary for any new um loads loads that are coming on. So we we do um anticipate, I mean, we can, we can take whatever load that they have and we can um purchase more as needed. I hope that answers your question.
Uh, I have one more in that, and then I'll recognize Commissioner Hirschbein. What's the price differential right now?
The price differential on the carbon free versus the our desert saver?
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's hard to say that, and we have so many different rate classes. And they're um, they're adjusted accordingly based on whenever S E changes their rates. Um, but roughly, the carbon free product is around um total bill. Um, probably, I think it's like seven to ten percent above S E's base price. If you're looking at certain other classifications, it it can go a little higher. I think um um recently S C has increased a lot of their rates, so we had to adjust our rates. Um, and um yeah, it's hard to say. It, our consultant team, they take care of all of the um adjusting on each rate class. We have hundreds of different rate classes, so it gets a little convoluted.
And I think that's something that we can uh, we can work on for the for the uh for for stakeholder is that, you know, we would provide that that information uh both for uh uh D C E and S E so that they know what products are available uh and um the the cost of those products above the base, the base rates.
Were you asking me also?
Yes, I did.
Okay, it's a matter of price. It's always available. It's a question of price. The price can vary interday by a factor of five. Uh, long term contracts can be, depending on when you do it, very attractive or very unattractive. Uh, if you do a hundred percent demand and it has to come from Edison or or D C E, you just created another monopoly. If you allow people to buy REX, which is a true reflection of the market value of of renewables, uh then uh then you do not hand your uh citizens and businesses bound and gagged to the utility companies. So you have to be very careful, very careful about not allowing them uh a a third choice, which is to go to the state created marketplace, which is what Amazon does and Tesla does. And everybody that knows what they're doing, they go by REX because that's a that there's no monopoly in that marketplace.
Thank you. Commissioner Hirschbein, you had a question?
Kind of a more immediate concern. Um, and and again, thanks for all the contributors. Um, and I'm beginning to understand a little bit more about what's going on here. Uh, assuming that we get another large for Palm Springs grow facility, indoor grow facility. Um, and based on the fact that there are now city goals in place versus a city policy, uh, would we be allowed to require purchases from uh renewable sources?
That may be a longer question or longer answer than we have time for.
Well, maybe we don't have time for it now, but I I'd like uh our attorney and staff to consider the ramifications of that question and let it get back to us because that's kind of ultimately what we're here for is whether we can institute certain requirements. I I know that the process to adopt these things and and the timeframes are 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 longer, are longer timeframes than that. But given that there's a city goal in place, and I don't know when those goals were adopted by council, but I assume they've been in place for a little while. Uh, although we don't, it's not officially called a policy. I'm curious what the difference is between a policy and a goal. But we do have policies in place that look for certain um energy saving requirements and that we now know that these can be satisfied by purchasing through certain suppliers. Is that something the planning commission can uh require moving forward? And and if we don't get the answer tonight, I'd still like to know the answer to it.
Uh, I think with that, I would leave that to our s- our attorney, Mr. Priest, if you want to opine.
Um, that is something that we can look into and we can bring back to the planning commission at later time. That would be my recommendation.
Before we wrap this up, and we clearly are not doing the second training portion of this study session, uh we've had a lot of people here with us. Uh, it might be helpful to Mr. Friedman if uh people who are in the industry just just quickly, if you could quickly say concerns that you have. Since nobody is responding. Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um. You know, one thing that would help me with this to better understand sort of the true effects of this on the industry would be perhaps to take this current ordinance and I guess would call it current process that uh Mr. Friedman put together and maybe apply it to one of the last two recently approved cannabis facilities to see how their application would have changed if they needed to apply these current rules from this proposed ordinance or we'll call it a draft ordinance, not even a proposed ordinance. Uh, again, it's it's um, I'm not an engineer. So a lot of the things that that have been, that have been espoused, um, don't really register in my head. It would register for me to see what it would take for a company um or an applicant to adhere to the requirements. And I'm wondering if that is a process the staff and or sustainability or Mr. Friedman would be willing to do to take it to the next step. And also, I think it would be very helpful for the city council as well.
Well, i- if I can respond to that, the easy answer um is if you've opted out of D C E, you opt back into D C E or talk with Edison for that. It does not in any way change your building uh leaving for this ordinance. Obviously, the state will have requirements starting in twenty twenty three, but that that's separate. For this ordinance is simply i- i- it's what's on your electric bill uh and how much are you paying for your electric bill? So uh to answer your question, Commissioner Roberts, absolutely, and that would be this is what we acquire, and it's essentially, as Mr. Noble just said, it's a cost. So that it just simply, how much would this cost you more? And and that is part of the presentation that would need to go to the stakeholders. And I'm the first one to say, we need to get that done and present that to the stakeholders um with information from D C and S E about their various products and the cost of those products.
Thank you. I'd also like to suggest that, you know, and and this has already been said a few times, that we, if we're going to continue continue this process, and it sounds like city council wants to, that we do a stakeholder meeting as soon as possible so that they can give us their input and ideas, and they probably have some good ones.
Yeah, and and we are working on that already. At sustainability with uh with Mr. Teller.
Uh, with that, I think I am going to call the, to close this meeting. Uh, we have um a regular planning commission meeting in three minutes, five minutes. And um I want to thank everybody for their participation, their comments. And uh, it's been very interesting. Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Um.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm closing the meeting. Flynn, should we push our meeting back, our five thirty to quarter of six?
Madam Chair, we will need a few extra minutes to transition over to the TV station so that this uh the regular meeting can be broadcast. Uh, so yes, we'll need about ten to fifteen minutes to do that.
And will this meeting be available for members of the public if they wish to listen to it?
Yes, we are recording the meeting, so it will be available.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'm going to ca- to close this meeting uh until the planning commission meeting at five forty five today.